First time we've used this today.
Oh, is that right?
The, the, today.
Brand new.
Brand new.
And just for your recognition. Okay, I believe we are live. Yes, nine o'clock.
Right, rise when you said pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the March ninth regular minute, minute, meeting.
Say it. Roll call, please.
Uh, Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes. John?
Come on up.
If you could please, right, we're gonna, this is a certification of recognition for Zeta. Zeta?
Ziska.
I'm sorry, John.
Ziska.
The N E F C O S Commissioners' Presentation in recognition and sincere gratitude for your dedication to Northeast Ohio Four County Regional Planning and Development Organization Board. We genuinely appreciate your commitment, your volunteerism during this time that you have served the N E F C O Board presented this day, second day of March two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I had my first NEFCO meeting and they said it was odd without this good day.
For all that you've, you've done for the years and
Thank you.
Thank you for all of us.
We want to get a picture.
Absolutely.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, if you come on up so we could, we can have a picture with you, with us.
We don't have anything in the background, but come on there.
Yes.
What's, what's your back?
We're gonna have. Do you want to be between Tony and I?
It's running.
Okay. Hey, good. Hey, took a few.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time to come up today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. It feels weird not having anybody here.
Okay. Here we go. Hello, hello.
Hello there, ma'am.
Where's your green hat?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the, oh, that's true. Today's Patty's big day.
I don't know.
My daughter was born today on sixteen. She just, she's Italian.
Happy birthday.
There you go.
Well, happy birthday.
She what? Emmy.
I said she's Italian. She wasn't Irish, so we set the date for her to be born on sixteen.
Nice, nice. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
Good.
Um, so one discussion I wanted to bring forward is seeing if you guys are in agreement on doing the employee appreciation day off again, which was about paid administrative day. I think it happened last year, so we're just trying to get it done and pass it through the legislative.
I, I'm not for that. It's just, I, I, I think we do give a lot of days off. And some other way of recogni- recognition, uh, you know, that has been brought, people have said, you know, hey, then get these days off, and I tend to agree, so I don't need, so I'll let that too, too.
Well, maybe, maybe get a little history for Mike, so in the past, things that we have done, or you, you were here for some of them, so.
So I think in the past, we've done ice cream socials, right, um, donuts, things.
So you weren't, you know, as involved, she's new to IT resources, so we have done, we've held events in the past, recent past few years that were not well received, not well attended. And what was very well received was the one day off. And so that, you know, we, years past, right, we would hold very nice events. Um, but it's cost money, right? So how much money do we want to spend? Or we can give the one day off. I think it comes right down to how much money do we want to spend. Um, we all, of course, very much appreciate every employee in Portage County. And for elected officials, we, they reserve the right to either participate or not. Um, but that's what it comes down to, quite honestly. No disrespect to any employee. We 100% appreciate them, of course. But, um,
Well, and the gist of it is, it's very hard to do, for the budget that we normally have set for the appreciation, it's very hard to do a lot for a thousand, over a thousand employees, and that's what we found. I mean, oh, and we did movie tickets one year. The, the, last year, we did the day off.
Yep.
The year before, we did the movie tickets, because all we could afford was one movie ticket, and we thought, well, you know, the movie, uh, uh, theater gave us a discount, and we're hoping that they take someone and rub up some business for them, because at that time, it was right after COVID, but, yeah, and then people complained because
And years ago, we had money from the vending machines that could, um,
Supplement.
Supplement in, in holding these nicer events, right? Uh, I mean, we would rent halls. I mean, it was really a nice event. Again, we just no longer have that type of money. So either give us a little bit more money to, to put together nicer events, or the one day off again was very well received, so.
And it doesn't cost us extra money, I mean, per se, because we don't allow it to cause overtime, right? And it has to be at the discretion of the supervisor, so.
And elected officials. Everyone to, um, receive a benefit. I think when we were dealing with some departments that work 24 hours a day, if we did an event, if we had something, not everyone would be able to come because they might work more. They're just getting off work and need to go home because they're coming back on. So we're trying to recognize also people that work, um, different hours and different shifts and things in that matter.
With supplement fare tickets or something. Did we hear any feedback from it last year? I mean, as far as the day off?
I received many emails of appreciation for the day off. Um, you know, one thing people appreciate is the like work-life balance, right, so. But we are happy to put something together if we have the money. Which is why we brought the decision to the board.
Yeah, I would like time to think about it myself, because I think we could come up with something. If I gotta cook wieners, I'll do it.
Well, we've had that in the past. We had our Yeah. Well, we did it a couple of years. The first year it was received, and then as ti- over time, it, it wasn't received as well.
Are, are, are we, when we do this, each of the thousand people, are we doing this for our departments or the whole?
Yeah, we do it for the whole county.
Right.
As, as commissioners, we, we even other elected officials, um, employees, we always include.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it's an equitable way to everyone to reappreciate, that, that, to be able to receive the same appreciation.
Yeah, and, and I agree with that. It's just like, the day off thing, as many days off as we do have, uh, that, that's the only thing that bothers me, uh, through there, but.
Well, I started bringing it now. The actual government week, I think, is in
May.
May, so you have some time to put it together. This was, you know, a quick, let's ask what they want to do.
All right, so, and you'd like to table it for right now?
I would. So give us time to think.
Perfect. I think that was all I really had. Other than that, just normal.
Journal entries.
Do we know how much money that we do have in the, the fund?
Um, I do not know offhand, but I could check that out and be able to get that back to you guys, so that helps with some decision making for you guys. I'm looking for that.
I thought it was around five thousand.
I was gonna say, I thought it was five thousand.
I think it's five thousand, which is not much for one thousand, thirteen hundred employees, right? And, you know what, could you look in the records, you, from, um, Vicki Steiner years ago? She did a great job putting things together. Um, we had a casino night one year, very, very well received. Um, and then we put on a really nice dinner. We gave fare tickets. They should have those notes somewhere over there. The pricing, although we need to update.
Great, all right. Journal entries.
All right. Looks like they're all standard. Did you have any comments on them?
Nope.
All right. In accordance with section three zero five point three zero of the Ohio Revised Code and this board's resolution twenty-one dash zero three nine six, part nine I, the Board of Commissioners acknowledges and approves the county administrator's approval two. I'll make a motion to authorize the hire of Curtis Bishop, clerical three, Portage County Jobs and Family Services. The tentative start date is Monday, April third, two thousand twenty-three. The Board of Commissioners agrees that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-employment screenings.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize three-day internal posting of bargaining positions for custodian for the Portage County Jobs and Family Service with an external posting if no internal appointment is made.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize the hire of Amanda Murphy, Personnel and Fiscal Specialist, Portage County Water Resources. The tentative start date is Monday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. The Board of Commissioners agrees that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-employment screenings.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize the hire of Trudy Rabb, Utility Billing Service Representative, Portage County Department and Budget and Finance. The tentative start date is Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The Board of Commissioners agrees that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-employment screenings.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve anniversary, probationary, or step increase for the following non-bargaining employees. Brett Lee, EMA. Lee Benson, Water Resources. Brian Cormany, Water Resources. Allison Goudy, Water Resources. Tia Rutledge, Water Resources. Cody Ullman, Internal Service Maintenance.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Commissioner Tinlin for our new digs. It's his idea and his leadership put it all together, and I believe did a lot of seeing to, uh, to, to help out, but it looks great, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, very nice.
The whole floor helped, and Sam from IT, you're the best.
Sam was a
Sam was a machine.
Thanks, Sam.
Good morning, Ms. Jackie.
Morning, Jackie.
What do you got for us today?
So everything is pretty much as usual except resolution number one. I wanted to draw your attention to that. This is just a continuation of the conversation that she was about last week. So we have the money in the general fund for that truck. She said it's hers and sold.
I think it was, what, fifty-some thousand, and it was outfitted and everything?
Yeah, so total, it was fifty-four thousand and some change.
Yeah.
And she was probably gonna get trading value, uh, so we're authorizing up to fifty-four.
Okay. All right, in accordance with section three oh five point three zero K of the Ohio Revised Code and this board's resolution twenty-one dash zero three nine six and the board's resolution twenty-one dash zero eight seven eight, the Board of Commissioners acknowledges and approves the county administrator's approval two. I'll make a motion to direct the auditor's office to pay process the March ninth, two thousand twenty-three bills, ACH payments, wires, journal vouchers, and then announce, as applicable, contingent upon the verification of the reports as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to process the March ninth, two thousand twenty-three budget amendments as reviewed and recommended by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a new truck for the Portage County Building Maintenance Department.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to transfer from Fund zero 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 one, General Fund, to Fund fourteen eighty-one Prosecutor State Grants.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes. Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You like your new digs?
Yeah.
There you go.
Good morning. All right, Ms. Sue.
Everything is pretty normal. That first one is just, um, for the bonuses that we're paying on two, three, for those, uh, people that we have retained.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to transfer from Fund fourteen fifteen Child Welfare Special Levy Fund to Fund fourteen ten Public Assistance Fund.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to transfer from Fund fourteen thirteen WIA Fund to Fund fourteen ten Public Assistance Fund.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to transfer from Fund fourteen thirteen WIA Fund to Fund fourteen ten Public Assistance Fund.
Say it.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
We could be split.
Is Ms. Hope here?
Full, um, search, it was your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
And he has the gavel hidden. Morning, Dawn.
Morning, Dawn.
I let him know already for
Oh.
Maybe you can get a plastic.
Uh-huh. Yeah, one of those little roller things, ergonomically good.
Uh, the mats. I'll save the part of it, too.
Yeah.
Good morning, Ms. Hope. You're up.
Come on up.
No time to rest.
Please say for the wicked.
How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, good, good.
What do you have for us this morning?
Um, okay, so I did a lot of research over this past week, and I reached out to the food bank, and I also spoke with Family and Community Services. Uh, I got a list of requirements of a sub-sig client from the consultants, and they gathered that information from the final rule to CFR, state and local, uh, requirements. So I sent those requirements to the food bank and Family and Community Services, also with a couple of standard questions, just to see who's capable, who has, uh, the capacity for what we need. Um, Michelle and I also spoke to a lot of food assistance programs in the county throughout this. We just, we got a lot of feedback on, you know, what they deal with, with the food bank, um, and we got a lot of good feedback from them, don't you think?
From the food, from the food, Akron Food Bank that you're talking?
Yeah. Um, so with that, um, I just wanted to tell you guys a few things about the food bank, and we have this for you to take a look at.
Thank you. Yeah, I, yep.
Thank you.
Um, so in two thousand twenty-two, and this is just in Portage County.
From all the, the forty-three organizations that we had, you gathered information from, okay.
Uh, well, the, the, I'm sorry, the list that I have at the last meeting, that is a list of people that they have served since the beginning of the year.
Okay.
What I'm about to tell you and what's on the paper that you guys just, that is from two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
Um, so one point three total, one point three million total meals established or enabled in Portage County in two thousand twenty-two. Um, over one point six total, one point six million total pounds of food distributed in Portage County in two thousand twenty-two, and over three hundred and eighty thousand total pa- dollars, goodness gracious, I'm so sorry. Total pounds of produce distributed in Portage County in two thousand twenty-two, all by the food bank. So I think it's in the best interest of the county to go with the food bank as the pass-through agency for this, because from the communication I've had with them and Family and Community Services, I think that they would be a lower risk or no risk instead of any other agency in Portage County. They are a regional food bank. They serve eight or nine counties, so it's multiple counties. They have dealt with this kind of stuff before. I mean, they did, um, distribution of cares to Portage County with food. Um, and, I mean, they have been very forthcoming with information. I haven't even had to ask them for stuff. Like, they sent me that stuff over. They sent me, uh, breakdowns of different grants that they've worked with and how it's been distributed back into the county. Uh, they also have pop-up programs in the county that they'd be able to do.
What are pop-up?
Uh, it's, it's like random.
Random.
The random, yeah.
So let's talk money. What are they gonna charge us? Because that, that was the big thing last week.
So in, we, we have to allocate the funds by two thousand twenty-four, but we have until two thousand twenty-six to spend. So instead of us saying, okay, well, we're gonna give you all this money right now. We're going to spend it out over three years, and that will prevent waste as well. So it'll be three hundred thousand dollars each year for the next three years. And we were able to, um, get a two percent administration fee, and that also includes, um, their storage, um, working on procurement, um, distributing and transporting the food as well. So it's, that two percent is all inclusive.
When we say distribute, do they bring it to a central location in Portage County or each organization? Because we, we talked to another group the other day, and she says, hey, I just get up on my computer and I poke in what I need and they deliver it.
Right, so I think it works where, you know, different food assistance programs can go to the food bank, or they can work with them to deliver it.
So they're only gonna charge us eighteen, wait, let's see here, eighteen thousand?
Correct.
To do nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, six thousand a year, eighteen thousand total.
And then we'll still have some money left over to, to pay off the consultants for any work that they have done so far?
Right.
Will we continue to need the consultants with the food bank?
So if I get the thumbs up from you guys today to move forward with the food bank after this, I will get in touch with the consultants and the people from the food bank. We'll probably have a kickoff meeting with them, and the consultant will draft a sub-grant agreement, and then we will then take that to Berger and Eckler, which has not taken out. Their fees are, you know, a few million dollars. They have a separate fund that we're working out of. I believe that once we have that, well, this is a different project.
Oh.
Um, anyways, so after that, I don't see us working with the consultant. So
For this project.
For this project.
Okay.
So one of the concerns that people have, that I've had discussions with is, is, uh, the, the fresh meat, ground meat or lunch meat and stuff like that, that, hey, we, we can go to Myers, or, and they work deals with us, and they get better, better, uh, deals for the food. And that, that seems to be the only glitch that was consistent with, you know, the dry goods, the, the produce, is, is being able to get meats that we do, and, and, and people do cook meals, some of these, and that, that is, that's, that's my, the last concern I have of talking to multiple people that have done stuff, is that, that's my glitch of giving all the money and to, to one organization, and I keep thinking, there's gotta be a little bit of a hybrid that we can do.
Well,
Go ahead.
I thought of that already.
Okay.
So they do receive fresh produce and baked goods, and I believe they do get some
They can get meats.
And we understand that there are some dietary needs that different food assistance programs address, you know, like backpacking programs need stuff that kids can prepare on their own, or, um, different, like, hot meals assistance programs for seniors. They need different types of food. So, uh, we're going to work with the food bank. They understand that we want to make sure that those people are accommodated as well. And they said that they're going to also, um, reach out and have meetings with hunger relief partners, and they're going to survey the community as well, just to see what the need
They actually need?
Yes, in addition to what they already have. So that will be a part of the agreement, and if they are not able to get it at the time at the food bank, they can still get other staple items, the money that they're saving on those staple items. Uh, in the final rule, they stated that most nonprofit food banks have about six months' worth of money for operations in their funds. So they could use those funds that are remaining, that they see dropped from the food bank, to go and purchase that meat. So that's like
Did you listen to my conversation the other day?
No.
That, and that's exactly, we had that conversation with one of the organizations that came up last week, is, is like, if I've got ten thousand dollars to spend on food for my organization, and because of what the county has done, I can get four thousand dollars a month, what I need, that means I have that four thousand dollars left in my budget that I could spend for meat and go out and do things. True?
Yes, because that was the only thing. I talked to the Ravens pack, and the, same thing with the Bertie pack. They did not have any issues. They found it to be convenient to order from the food bank. They said, you know, we just go online, but you have to go in with a certain time, and she said, some people are finding it a little harder after COVID to get everything that they need from the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. But my question was, the Ravens pack and the Bertie pack, you know, they just do, like, non-essential staple. I mean, like you said, meals that they
Little guys can, that the kids could put together.
Yeah, but they don't necessarily deal with meats or peanut butters or anything like that. So what you're saying is they will assess the area to make sure that they have plenty of the items that, um, are of need here, not necessarily the overall umbrella of the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. Okay.
Mike?
I think that, um, people have to understand a couple of things. First of all, is, is when we get this type of information in, I don't think that just one or two people look at it and sign off and we move on with life. Our meeting last week, um, kind of went on and into, um, ideas, different ideas, and people thought they could handle it, but I, I gotta tell you, I think it's a bigger project than what one group can handle, or two groups. Um, and I know that Hope's been working on this for a month, at least, and, um, this final, um, drawdown of what you've determined would work for the county. My, my goal is, I'm sure is, is the same as the other two commissioners, and that is, um, let's get this food out there to these people, especially with the, with the loss, um, of, of other funds. And, uh, I, I appreciate you. Um, it's been a lot of work. Um, and I know it's frustrating, and, uh, I think we hit that goal where you, you just kept pounding and pounding and pounding, and, uh, I think we're where we need to be with it.
Yeah, because we weren't as big of a fan of the food bank last week, because, but I don't feel like we had a lot enough information at that time.
We didn't have any.
And, yeah, it got thrown at us.
To give all the information we had. Just to recap, our main priorities were the speed of getting food to those in need to the community.
That's right.
The efficiency of the program to be able to get
And the accountability. That's
That was the key, yeah.
And the experience. The Akron Canton Food Bank has a wealth of knowledge and the willingness and ability to go out and meet with the community partners, establish a comprehensive plan, and that's part of what they told us. We will go out and meet with them, and we will establish a comprehensive plan. Because when I, I spoke to our local resources, a main concern was the availability of foods that they need.
Yeah.
And the, this, the, um, I think her name's Colleen, um, told us they would be willing to go out and talk with them to ensure that they could get what they need.
See, and that's awesome. That's important. Yep.
And we just need to make, we just want to make sure that that's, like, because I, I talked to someone yesterday, and they said, you know, the Akron Canton Food Bank sometimes tends to overpromise and under-deliver, so we want to make sure. I'm glad we're phasing it over three years, so that if our first year experience isn't that great, or they don't deliver what they promised, then we can reconsider something else, so.
That's what a, a sub-grant agreement is for. They'll have the conditions that they need to meet, and they're so held accountable.
I'm not proud to go knock on a door.
Yeah.
So is the board okay with me moving forward with the food bank?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Yeah, very good. It, I will did what Mike said. You, you're getting training by fire, and, and, and it's, this is the best guy, and you can't go to school to get this?
No.
Uh, you gotta be fired upon, well, right, to, to see, see what's happening, so you're doing very well. You're handling
Yeah, thank you.
That's very good. All right, do you have anything else, ma'am?
Uh, I have five resolutions.
All right.
All right.
What else you been doing?
Just hanging out? I saw those.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the BJA, uh, Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one Edward Byer Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Award in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six eighty-five on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Say it. Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three State-of-the-Body-Warren Camera Grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Second with discussion.
Discussion, please.
Body cameras are up and running. Um, every deputy within the county has one. Um, the only thing left is our Verizon hookup for, um, that, that doesn't have anything to do with the operation. It just, it's an advanced operation, uh, to the body cam.
Do you have, do you have, when you, you bring that up, the advanced, what does that mean?
Means that if a, uh, if a deputy's in a home, and, uh, they're in the middle of a tussle, and the dispatcher's calling on the radio, trying to check up on them, if they can't get a hold of them, they can get on the, uh, their system, uh, one of their big screens, push a button, and they're getting live feed from the body camera, so they know what's going on. Uh, same way with the vehicles. If a deputy's on a traffic stop and they can't reach them, um, they can push a button, and on a big screen shows them a view, uh, from the vehicle as to what's going on around. as to what's going on around. Um, so it's, it's awesome. The second phase of it is, is if, if a deputy's chasing a subject through woods, um, let's say he throws a gun, throws drugs, um, he can go back, push a button and follow the same trail that they did when he was chasing him. Because he may forget which way he went. Uh, the second phase of that is if a deputy is, is out in the, in the field, uh, gets hurt, is laying there, uh, it'll throw a GPS curtain to exactly where he is.
So was that included in our original um, proposal for the body cams?
So Verizon was not necessarily included in the original proposal. This, my understanding is the advanced feature that um, works very well with the cameras and, and really makes it a better program than what was initially um, presented for us.
And then, um, so this $141,000, that will come off of what we had budgeted for this program?
Uh, I would say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only, the only thing with what, what you're speaking about with Verizon, each, each camera piece has a SIM card. And it's only through Verizon.
Yeah.
Now, I went through every quote and every invoice. And with the company, there's nothing in there that says anything about Verizon.
Yeah.
Cause that was asked before we purchased this. And so that, that little detail, the company did not quite.
So what, what kind of funding are we looking at that that additional left off feature is gonna cost?
So the sheriff's department went out and got a grant, right? And that was the sheriff's department that got that. It would offset that cost.
Do we know what the cost is though?
The monthly cost.
So we're working on the monthly cost.
Want you to update us, Mike?
Yeah, the monthly fees. I've been, I've been speaking with um, Verizon.
Where we started to where we are.
Uh, Verizon out of New York, um, their corporate office. If anybody's tried to get ahold of a human in Verizon, good luck. Cause it's taken quite a while.
For someone in the United States.
But I did get ahold of, of a person who does deal with, with this. It started out $5,000 a month to cover it. Um, I've got them down to around $2,500. I'm talking with um, one of the corporate people, um, their attorney and a manager in Kent who is willing to step up. He's a retailer, um, for Verizon. And he's willing to step up and, and give us a good price. So um, I'm hoping tomorrow, uh, I get a phone call so we can have a four-way call and, and get us straightened out. But um, I've been working on it since we all realized that this was an issue. And um, I think we're gonna get a good deal uh, out the door. And I truly think we can't go without it. And that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
And there's no local match. This would absolutely help offset the cost.
Okay. Alright.
Anything else? Any other discussion?
No, I'm done.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Uh, Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Alright, I'll make a motion to authorize the application to the US Department of Justice for the BJA Fiscal Year 2023 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use C O S S U P Site-Based Grant Program. Local solicitation in the amount of 1.3 million with no local match required on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Roll call please.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp Grant Award in the amount of $21,625 and zero cent, or zero, or one cents on behalf of the Portage County Internal Services Maintenance Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I have a question on that. Is that what we got or where are we getting that grant funding? Is that because of the training and stuff or why, what is that grant awarded?
To purchase a scissor lift for maintenance.
Say that one more time. A lift?
Scissor lift.
Scissor lift?
Scissor lift, okay.
Oh.
Oh. I love it.
Yeah. We get to try it out.
Yeah. So, okay. Yeah, cause I was like, why is it going to Internal Services? So I was like, I'm wondering. Okay, got it. Alright, thanks. Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the Ohio Pet Fund Grant Award in the amount of $2,500 on behalf of the Portage County Dog Board.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hope. Good job, kids.
Good job, Hope. Thank you. I'll go to work.
Solid waste, Miss Dawn. We waited to call you in before, till we had our new digs.
Good morning, ma'am. How are you? Did you bring us donuts or anything today? Thanks, sit down.
No chapsticks.
Morning.
Good morning. We got updates?
Updates, discussion, future of solid waste, where we're going in this life.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah. We've had a lot of changes over the last year and a half. And just like to talk about where we're going and maybe where we would like to go together.
Can you brief us on where we are?
Where are we? Well, we're creating a program. Like we created a new battery program on our first H H W. As I'm pretty involved in. We standardize our programs. We're doing really well. We have new trucks, two new grants.
Now with those new trucks, because my first year here, we, we talked about the maintenance nightmare that you guys had there, uh, and trying to keep them on the road. How's that do with your schedule? We have, with two new trucks or three?
Three.
Three, okay. So how does that, I mean, what has that done to your budget? Because your, your maintenance guy is not working 24/7 to, to keep those, uh, those monsters on the road.
Life is really good at home.
Pardon?
Life is really good.
Okay.
Great. Life is really good. So our budget is seeing much better. And with that being said, um, you'll see some resolutions coming through and, and finally being able to do what we've been needing to do for a while, which um, is replacing our 2011 Ford Fusion.
And what's the one where we have to pedal to get on 76?
She wants to plug it in now.
What? No, she needs to do it. I, I will vouch for that. I've rode in the Ford Fusion. We have to pedal to get on 76. Um, so, so Dawn, and how's it working out with all the communities that we're all paying the same price? We're all on the same contract. And it goes until what, this July? It was a year and a half, wasn't it?
It's auto-renewing. It, it doesn't, yeah. And like, one of the two of us needs to make changes. It.
Yeah, we built that into the system this time. Good.
So life is good there too. That was the best thing we ever did.
Right.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. And tell us about some events you have coming up.
Right, Earth Day is coming up on April 22nd. We will take tires and we'll take.
Yeah, which is big. That's what most people are looking for too. Tires and how to dispose.
Electronics.
Yep.
Um, speaking of that, that's another change that I would like to eventually talk about and that is our shredder. It is a big need for our community, our residents of Portage County, but our shredder is designed.
Paper shredder?
Yes, our paper shredder. Designed. It is something that we will eventually make our money back on. We do have it in our budget and cheaper.
What is the cost of a new shredder?
Around $50,000. The market for paper is really good though. It's $140,000.
Oh, beautiful.
So we will make the money back on.
So China buying paper again?
They know. Ohio. Ohio is buying paper.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of paper mills in Ohio.
So when do you wanna do this?
Well, we're researching. It's the best one and the best value and the best market. So.
Okay.
So that's something we're looking at too.
Great.
Good. And I have not heard any complaints. No, no residents. I know. Yeah. It's, life has been good for me with solid waste. So.
It, it has been. I also, uh, we're looking at a service truck, a service truck we have with, um, we see for a motor truck. It's a 2016. It does not fit the needs of the district. It is not able to service every truck. And um, we would like to trade that one in and get one that does and is able to change the tires on our, on our truck.
Is that the one you said you were applying for grant money for or no?
No, I would trade that in and.
Okay.
For checks. That money is already budgeted for.
Oh, it's already in your budget then? Okay.
Very good.
And I'm, two forklifts that we'd like to auction and get a new one. Those two forklifts, I believe we received when we bought the building.
They came with the building?
Mm-hmm.
Just need to do some updates.
Okay. And I'm, I'm proud of what you've done when you took the helm of the solid waste. You've, you've done great.
How's, how's our turnover there?
I mean.
I don't, I haven't seen anything. And that's, that, that was key too.
That was really great.
When I went out and took a tour and um, they're just awesome. They came out off the road and they're boom, washing the trucks and the salt off. It is crazy.
And you know what? It's all a change in leadership.
Yeah. But we're proud of you. Yeah, we're proud of you.
And attitude.
Another thing I'd like to discuss is a township contacted me and wanted to talk about potentially us dropping a 40 yard off for a, a trash day and hauling their tires. Then going for the tires, but us hauling because we obviously have the capability to do that. I had reached out to Liberty Tire. I don't have any answers yet, but I need to get your thoughts on that first.
So what's your, what's your suggestion to us for that?
It is a great service that we can offer. We are in a position to do so.
Okay.
But.
So it would be, so whatever community wants that, will other communities be allowed to, 40 yard to, hey, drive to wherever, can you do that? And then once we do that, then you're gonna find somebody that will take them and shred them?
Yeah, we are, I'm Liberty Tire.
But you're saying that the community that wants it, cause normally if a community does it, you have to be a resident within that community. It's not like anyone can come.
And they would govern it in monetary.
Yeah.
They would be responsible.
Cause I know when Ravenna does it, you have to actually show a utility bill or show your driver's license. So you, you think you're fine with that then? I think it's a good community.
We will host, if we receive that, an agricultural tire event, which we've never done before.
That's big with those big tires for the tractors.
$100,000 seriously each. But if we can help on that aspect too, then I'm all for it.
Well, you're doing the work. We're not. So.
Yeah. So that's your recommendation. I think go for it.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, very good.
Bring donuts next time.
I'll bring fruit.
Thank you.
Whatever.
Helping stuff. Thank you.
Thanks Dawn.
Appreciate it. Internal Services.
Shannon.
Shannon, good morning.
Well, hey Shannon.
Good.
So fancy.
You like it?
I do. I love it.
You can sit. You don't have to stand. You can sit. You don't have to stand.
Okay. I have, oh, I have some, not much. Um, I have a couple of session items. Uh, my first one is the leases of Tavern 1888 and D R I R N R. Um, Tavern 1888 is up for in April to um, receive a new lease. And however she wants it to stay the same, we usually do consumer price index increase. With that, it would go only from 875 to 880, or excuse me, from 875 to 882. Or we can just remain the same. So.
What, what?
Drive would come in.
With that, that's seven cents.
It's, it's 875 to 882. Um, it's like 0.8%.
So, so I have a question. Very honest. How have we been with making those 875 payments? Has it been a struggle still?
Yes. And I told her I was willing to, yes. She's always paying over. She's always paying the late fee. So I told her, what can I do? Cause last time we tried, it was do the first of the month. Then we made it do the 15th of the month. So I said, what if I make it do the last day of the month? Cause that's when she turns in her payments. So I, I haven't heard a response back, but. I said, so then you would not have to pay, you know, your late charge constantly. She's paying a late fee. And I'm like, this, I don't know how that's working for you, but.
Well, here's the problem I have is, you know what? It's, it's, we're talking $7 increase a month. If you pay your payment on time, I'm sure our late.
Our late, what's the late fee? 25, 50?
It's like 10% or, I don't know. I went this wrong.
Yeah, it's a nice chunk.
I'm sorry. She's, she's $800. I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong one. She pays 875.
Because she paid her 75. But what would, so it would go from 800 to 882?
No, I apologize. I went to the holdover. So we go to 800 and plus another 0.8%.
Which would take it to?
Cause I was like, no, she's always paying. It's like basically $8.
800 and you said it would go up 0.8%. Sure.
Maybe like $70.
Not even. 64. But here's the thing. Okay, we have other tenants.
Correct.
So therefore, are we doing any?
Everybody's been increased this year.
I, I don't see how we cannot be consistent. And, and the fact of the matter is, if she would just pay on time, she would still be less than what she pays every month because she pays late at 875. Her payment would go up to 864. So maybe that would encourage her. But then again, we raised it before.
Correct.
And thought that would, and she just continues to pay the late charge, no matter what it is.
At the end of the month with the 8, 0.8% increase and that.
If you'd like to try that, go ahead. I can't see if the end of the month versus the first of the month, I'm not sure there's a difference.
We get that drop, we get it in the drop box the last day of every month. Cause we go out to get the mail the next day and it's in there in the evening.
So you know what? And, and I think in fairness and consistency with all our other tenants, I, you know.
Right.
We need to, and like you said, it's very simple. It's less.
You don't?
It's less with, out the.
It was your chair.
Yeah, okay. And then D R, D R I R N R, they're based out of Cuyahoga Falls. They rent, I don't, I don't, do you know that?
I have no idea.
So they rent a little office in the bank down that hallway.
Okay, okay.
And they use it as a meeting room to meet people in Ravenna.
Yeah.
And they pay $150 a month for that. So do you want me to adjust theirs to the consumer price index as well? And just go with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I mean, it's not that much.
No.
Yeah, so.
And like you said, consistency is the best.
That's what I agree too, yeah.
And since everything we do is an open book and it's public record.
Right.
I mean, we could really upset a lot of tenants if we're picking and choosing who can get increases and who's not. And if it's in their lease, they know it's coming.
Right. Okay, okay. Um, the exterior of our area is in the, something else I wanted to discuss.
Like down, down there?
Yeah, so like you know, the entrance, entrance to our area, have you seen the tile on the sides of it? It looks not so pleasant. I would like to cover it with um, vertical metal siding to blend with the building, to blend. It'd be white or like light gray.
So do you have a cost for that?
Yes.
Do we have a budget?
It'd be, it'd come out of the maintenance budget. It's between, of what it currently looks like.
No, well, the, what?
I think it's gonna be a pretty good budget for it. Did you want me to?
Is it gonna be up and down or sideways?
Yes.
Up and down?
It'll be, it'll be vertical. Um, cause you, as you know, like this is what it currently looks like right now.
Yeah.
So it is a eyesore when you pull into our, especially this area.
So what did you get a cost for?
It's anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000 to cover it.
Yeah. And it's in your budget?
It's in my budget. It's in my budget.
Well, I think it would definitely be an enhancement because I, I know you guys have done a lot just to that area just with paint and carpet. I mean, that has made a huge difference in the curb appeal right there. So.
I'm good.
Good, good. Okay. Alright, now I have my project update sheet. However, I changed it.
That's a week.
I changed.
Shannon.
Cause I, to me this is less confusing. Um, I was working on what the old was. And then, um, tell me if you think it's better. You want me to go back and change some things?
Looks better just right up that. There you go.
I know. Thank you.
Michelle says so.
It's nice to have Michelle over here.
Um, my updates are, I tried to do, you know, read the building like we did before.
Yeah.
Um, and then I highlighted and read what my updates are. Um, I did not put like all of the detail that we had on the admin. It was just getting so, where it was like, okay, this isn't making sense. But so my first um, change to the admin, um, the admin building, the, the cost of the elevators, we budgeted because we were trying to do a estimate for, it was a million dollars. And we were pretty close, I think.
Pretty close for a million bucks. $50,000.
Yeah. And what, what they do is, is they're gonna replace everything. They leave the shelf of the elevator itself, but they replace the mechanics, they replace the inside cab, they replace everything. Everything's done.
That's all three of those?
All three of them.
And how do they do that? Do they do one at a time?
Yes, you have to.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Um, I haven't signed anything yet, but if you guys are okay to move forward?
Yes.
Jackie will have to have a little bit more budget.
The, the budget is $50,000 more.
Yeah.
$50,000.
Still have to work with Jackie on that one, just to make sure. Um, let's see. The main hallway, um, it should be finished uh, next, at the end of next week.
Yeah, they're really.
And it looks a hundred percent better. And it looks a hundred percent better.
Because it already doesn't.
Just the way it is.
I know, right? Um, then I'm going to be getting a cost. I know you didn't know if you wanted to do the floors yet, but I thought I'd just go out there and get a cost for it.
And are we talking like, do the hall so it looks the same as the, uh?
Yes, and it will go on the sides and it will look okay.
It will? Good, because it will looks, because that flooring really dates it.
I know. And everybody gets mad when we cover treasure. But I'm like, it is so old.
I know.
And it's marked up and it's got holes in it, obviously.
But you see the transition when you go into the treasure and it's like you stepped into the new millennial versus the, the sixties.
So it'll stop right, you know where we put down the new flooring right in front of the treasures? That's where it would stop.
Mm-hmm.
If that works.
That looks good. That'll look good.
Um, the next one is the EMA. Unfortunately, the March radio towers, the shelters, we didn't receive any bids.
Oh.
I know. So I.
We need three of those or five?
What's that?
The top, the, the shelters.
Three shelters. So we are gonna put it out for rebid. I'm gonna give a little bit longer timeframe for them to, a gentleman reached out and said, I would have bid on it, but I got the bid too, I requested the bid too late. I'm gonna get my bid bought.
Brian had mentioned that you could buy some of those shelters used. Did you ever look at that?
It's still, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, because it, no matter what they, if they buy a shelter that's been removed, somebody's gotta go out and pick it up and.
Yeah.
Prepare it to be moved.
And these are brand new.
And then drive it to there and, and put it down.
Yeah, that, well, that's why I was wondering, because I remember him saying, he had shown us some shelters then.
I asked him the same question. And then these are, we've got new towers and we want the towers to last for a long time. We'd really like the cabinet shelter to last a long time.
Hey, moving on juvenile court, they updated their cost because we're getting ready to go out to bid. And it's over quite a bit.
Ooh. I understand, because I thought we budgeted eight.
So we, we had a total, and then I came to you for another, for the furniture.
Yeah.
Another hundred, which brought us to nine.
Nine oh nine.
And now he's getting all his pricing back. Because when they originally gave it to us at the eight, eight oh nine or whatever, that was almost a year ago. Then they came back with the furniture. Okay, we did the furniture. And now, now we're up even more.
We're getting blasted by the same way everybody else is.
And, and people are having a hard time getting bids, even at that. It's, I bid everything, even a lot of resources. I was talking in our meeting, our leadership meeting the other day, I was like, we're getting like one bid on things we used to get like seven.
Not enough people.
Not enough people? Are they going for more jobs or the timeframe that you need them done? They just don't have the workers or, yeah, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd have to work with Jackie on that too.
Jackie, take that money tree in your office.
She's running out of money. Um, the justice center, the cement was poured. I do have pictures. I was ready.
Let's see.
This is, it's now poured. This is cement. This is what it looks like.
So you had talked about that they were gonna have to dig.
They dug and then.
How deep did they have to go? I mean, were they, okay, no, I just.
They went all the way down to the gravel portion. Unless it was the walking area, they did not.
Okay.
He sent me pictures.
Very good.
I think they will have to. It just needs a couple of days to carry them. I'll feel them back in the. Um, and then the columns are to be completed in front of the Fisher's apartment tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
We're waiting for it to warm up because they have to put sleeves over them. So they say it's too hard in the cold.
You know what the nice part about those columns are? You can do like sleeves over them for different events and stuff or like, you know, have you ever seen them do that?
Like the nylon, they'll do the nylon. Now, the middle one comes out in case they need a truck to come in, but yeah. Um, Ravenna courthouse, the, we have the, we have the, um, budget in place now and the contract is being routed, um, currently so that we can get those, um, elevators ordered. And I think the judge wanted me to do it towards the fall for install, so I want to get order now. And that's all, is this easier? It's better?
I like this better. I can read it better.
Organized.
I can read it easier.
Okay, good.
I don't have to go get my cheaters.
Oh, my gosh. I know. I mean, I'm gonna dig my phone, everything's a little bit. And then that's all I have. And then I just have resolution.
Did the, was the record center, did they, I saw trucks there as I was coming in a while back.
Starting.
They're starting?
Getting ready to start.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion. The board of commissioners declares the necessity to purchase two vehicles with a trade-in of one vehicle for the use by Portage County Solid Waste District.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
The board of commissioners declares the necessity to purchase one forklift for use by the Portage County Solid Waste District.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
The board of commissioners declares the necessity to purchase one forklift rotator attachment for use by the Portage County Solid Waste District.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
The board of commissioners declares obsolete and authorizes sales of forklifts and miscellaneous item public auction for the Portage County Solid Waste Management District.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
The board of commissioners agrees to set proposal date for the request for qualifications for professional engineering services for water storage for the Portage County Water Resources Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
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 The board of commissioners agrees to award and enter into a contract with Boeck and Sons, Inc. for the riddle block building roof replacement project.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
The board of commissioners accepts the grant award in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and one cent from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Grant Program for the, didn't we already do this?
Yes.
She's passed the resolution, though, correct?
We already did it somewhere else, I thought.
On, last week or something?
Oh, it was under, no, it was just under hope today.
Yeah.
Okay. So we can remove that one. Because I asked about it. Remember, I said, why is it, okay, so I just remove that one.
The grant, so hope, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make sure it's on the right page.
That's okay. The board of commissioners agrees to amend resolution twenty-three dash zero zero seven nine adopted February second, twenty twenty-three, approving specification and bid date for silken sand road bridge replacement, Nelson one sixty-two, County Highway two fifty-three, over Eagle Creek and Nelson Township, Portage County.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
The board of commissioners agrees to enter into an agreement with Haasen Staub Architects, I had to say that right, Haasen Staub, Architects for Architectural Services for the Preparation of Plans and Specializations for the Fence Enclosure at the Portage County Justice Center.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes. The board of commissioners agrees to enter into an agreement for prevention, retention, and contingency, PRC, family support services between the board of commissioners on behalf of the Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Catholic Charities.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
The board of commissioners agrees to enter into an agreement with Jobs and Family Services, the Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Governments, and Leadership Portage County for the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
You know what? I, I wanna pause on this. I think we need to discuss this. Because, um, yeah, I may redact my vote because there's some stuff going on here and, and I'm not sure until we get that resolved that we should approve this.
That's my thoughts.
Tony, do you know what we're talking, you know?
No, I don't.
That's, Kurt Ruhr will run the leadership program for the youth.
I understand. Thank you. If that's what that is.
Yeah.
Redacted, so noted. Double.
Yeah, so it's no. We're not gonna prove it.
Okay?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
Yep.
Okay, I'll let John handle it.
Okay. The board of commissioners accepts and awards the bid for BioSalads Trucking Transportation Services for the Department of Water Resources.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Come on autopilot. That's why I'm like, wait a minute, whoa.
Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't realize that was what that was.
Just to clarify, we will reject?
Reject.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. We should have a pet cup called it better, shouldn't we? We just moved in and we. Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, we're still trying to find things.
Right.
Regional planning, the new digs. You're up.
Take care of people's health, Shannon.
Oh, yes.
Very much.
Hi.
Hey, guys.
Morning.
There you go. We, we actually like that.
Why does she, she's got, she's super warm.
Her little Shannon.
Continue on.
It feels like it's heating. No, I'll do the talking.
High metabolism.
Reassess?
Yeah, we have to.
Or do you have one to discuss?
This is a public hearing.
Yes, you will.
Oh, we have to reassess.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll reassess the commissioner's meeting and go to.
To the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep, reassess the public hearing. Yep. Welcome. We thank you for joining us. I will now open a public hearing for proposal, proposed amendments to Portage County Subdivision Regulations at ten AM. I, Commissioner Tony Bettlementi, President of the Board of Commissioners, President, Commissioner Sabrina Christian Bennett, Vice President, Commissioner Mike Tindlin is the third member of the board. The proposed hearing is in compliance with Ohio Revised Code seven one one point one zero. Portage County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing and hear comments, proposal, amendments to the Portage County Subdivision Regulations, which governs the plats and subdivisions of land within the uncorporated area of Portage County. The notice of this hearing was published in the Record Courier on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The copy of the proposed changes of, of, to the regulations has been displayed and available for public view at the commissioner's office, the regional planning commission's office, and a copy is also posted in the county's website. Website information is given January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is anyone here to speak or want to be sworn in to speak? No? Here none? There's? Okay. If you'd like to speak, so we're gonna, you don't have to be sworn in either.
Okay, so we've completed the, uh, a major update to subdivision regs in twenty twenty-one, June twenty-one. And so basically, after we did that, you know, and, you know, for Mike's benefit, you know, the subdivision regs were first created in nineteen ninety-four, Mike, and they weren't updated until twenty twenty-one. So it's too long, you know, and they're long overdue changes. And for the most part, we only changed the sections that, you know, the different review entities, which is water resources and the county engineers' office and that's, and the health department, and so the water needs to change from our perspective as well. And so that's all changed in twenty twenty-one, which was a pretty significant change considering, you know, it hasn't been updated in a long time. A lot of the language was outdated even. And so when we changed it, we still talked about the fact that there was, you know, poor grammar from the previous plan that was in there, grammar change, definitions in terms of change. So we came back and, um, modified the entire, you know, the entire subdivision regs to handle minor grammatical changes and updates. And that was, that was done throughout the entire subregs. And then the only other sections that were modified based on what we initially saw from our updates in twenty twenty-one are, were in section, well, directly in section three hundred. So, did you guys get a copy of our?
Yeah, it's, yep.
Perfect. So those are the sections that really had significant changes. You know, we, we removed the reference to the number of copies, conditional approval for preliminary plans, thing. We added that lengthy, validated, length of validation of some primary plant. We removed hypothetical phrases, like only the plan map. We moved references to the number of copies, the Smith of Platts, correct references to section three, three point, three or two point three, because that has been modified and is no longer relevant. Added conditional approvals sections, moved, um, the basis of bearings, which is some attack now, and then we just clarified the language, the rule muddled in three ten, um, three ten point one three. And so that's just really it. The other important thing we did in twenty twenty-one was we said, rather than eight, thirty-four years or however long it was, we said, we said, why don't we do this update, a major update every three years? So we were gonna begin our major update again in, in this June for, is, is due in July of twenty twenty-four. So just wanted to keep you, you know, just do this last year, you know?
It felt that way.
Yeah. And so anyway, so that's, I just want to give you update on that stuff. I don't know if you have a lot of questions or any questions?
I don't.
I do not.
Nope.
Nope, okay. So that, you know, that's what we're doing. We do have some update, and we do have a, you know, one of the things that we haven't required yet, we're gonna, we're gonna need to require in the postal service and sponsors is, so big subdivisions, they want post, centralized postal mailboxes in subdivisions. So we have to add that into the, which is different. You know, right now, if you ask for mail delivery.
They just want one, like the condos used to do, like one big old metal box where everyone.
So, so they, I mean, for even the, the divisions that, subdivisions that don't have that, they're gonna ask us, just the new ones?
Just the new ones.
Okay.
It makes it easier for them to just have to step at one place and fill all the mailboxes and go. And so that would probably require us to suggest a bump out for a couple cars to park there, get out, get their mail, get their cars and go.
Right.
There's some society things that are good and bad. People say, oh, people can come and use those places. And then the other argument is that the people don't want to see what they're getting. The other people see what they're getting. So, so I'll stop talking.
That's it? You're done?
I'm done.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? In hearing no further, this will conclude the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Portage County subdivision regulations. Uh, we will adjourn the public hearing meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
We convene.
We're gonna reconvene as Board of Commissioners. Resolution, motion to approve the amendments of Portage County subdivision regulation previously adopted by Regional Planning Commission on February 8th, 2022.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
On behalf of Portage County Commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending and presenting, Todd. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Great.
So I think I'm next.
Ah, you, you are next. Yes, sir.
Okay. I, this is, yeah, send you the email copy.
Yes.
Yes.
But you don't have, probably a hard copy, so we'll get you a hard copy, but you're, just look at. So that's the comp plan. We're very near completion. We're, you know, getting our, you know, sending out feedback, getting feedback back on it. So there's two things I wanna talk to you about. One is the timeline and what you guys think about it. So right now, you know, the comp plan was just like a hundred thousand and some change, you know, like a hundred thousand and eight hundred dollars, something like that is what you guys gave to us. The first fifty, you know, for Mike's benefit, the first fifty thousand dollars you guys paid for. So you guys paid us fifty thousand dollars in cash. And the remaining amount of money from fifty thousand to that hundred and eight hundred dollars was going against our.
Technical assistance?
No, no.
Oh, no, towards the debt.
We included the twelve technical assistance of that too.
Yeah.
After we got past the technical assistance, then everything was going against the debt of our building. Um, when I say our building, it's in your name, but the reason why it's in your name is we can't exactly. In 1998, for my side, in 1998, we were asked, we, Regional Planning, I was here in 1998, Regional Planning was asked to leave, and they found a building on Prospect Street. So they bought a building and it was a, it was, to say it was a fixer-up was probably an understatement. They put four hundred thousand dollars into it, uh, total.
Who did? Regional planning?
Yeah, and the board, or Regional Planning.
Okay.
Um, so, which you guys are all members of, but, um, and all the townships are members of. So the board said, okay, let's do this, you know? And it was, it was expensive, you know, to do all that. I think the cost is actually over, over four hundred thousand. I think they had another hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant on top of that, not grant on top of that. We actually had two loans on the building. And, um, in 2007, again, before my time, there was some sort of financial issue with Regional Planning, and then the board, the board at that time waived, um, our, our debt service payment. And then in 2010, we were also really hurting in, in Regional Planning. And so that was back in the, how do we go with this? So we get on the board at that time, waived our thing. And when I say waived, that's not, that's not totally correct. They took that money and put it to the end of the loan. So once we paid the loan out, we still had to pay the county commissioners back. So, and then when you guys had us move back, I think it was the end of 2018, we moved back here. The commissioners at that time said that we won't make you pay up the debt service, you know, until you can kind of thing. And, but they still wanted their money back. So this is one small way to pay you back. Also, at the time we left, we had no renters. Now we have renters. We have, the building almost full, except for where our space is. Three of those rooms are rented, and we do get inquiries about renting the rest of that space. There's a, there's a health, um, business on one side of the building. There's a law firm on the other side of the building, because they're all, and we have, in our old building, we have a, oh gosh, what's it called? It's adoption. My gosh, can't do rent right now. But they're an adoption agency here locally in Portage County. They use it mostly for just storage. So their rents are, are over thirty thousand dollars.
A year.
So, you know, Sabrina's aware of this, because she's on our executive committee. We talked about this year being the year that we start paying it back about twenty thousand dollars a year. I think, I think minus whatever the comp plan's gonna work out to be, we're still gonna owe roughly two hundred thousand dollars to the commissioners.
Who collects and retains the rent money?
We, we collect and retain.
Who's we?
Regional planning.
Really?
Yeah, we manage it too. We, we make all the repairs. We don't really say, hey, get commissioners, you know, the hot water thing just went out like it did a month ago. We save money, we take care of ourselves, and we manage that. We, uh, we do our own salting. We do our own snow plowing for our renters.
Well, well, just so Mike knows, and I don't think he mentions, statute does not allow Regional Planning to, to have debt. So that's why the building, we financed it, and the building actually is in our name, but it is their building. And so that, when he talks about he owes two hundred thousand, that is from everything, like I said, before any of us, that they spent way too much money to remodel that building.
It is. And, and the other thing, like, for example, Mike, we're not even allowed to have a credit card, which is kind of ridiculous. So.
Yeah, they have certain.
We should have signed an agreement that they would, they would be the holders of the debt, but we were responsible for paying it back. We plan on that. You know, Sabrina reminds me.
Well, we've tried.
She reminds me quite often, so.
Yeah, you know Sabrina, she's always about that money. But no, and they, and another important factor you've left out, we've tried to sell the building numerous times.
Yep.
Without any success, but now, at that time, the building already pretty much was setting empty. Maybe had one or two tenants. Now, they're, they're getting it full. So now they're able to start paying us back.
One of the tenants, um, the medical office building, they, they, or section, they wanted to buy the building, and they were telling me that, you know, they thought they'd hear back, they had to have a, they're getting a small business loan for part of the loan, so they could, you know, that would help with the loan payment, or the purchasing of the building, I should say. And, uh, they said they had a business plan established, and then the small businesses would approve it, and they thought it would be approved in March, which is March now. So there's still a possibility that somebody could buy it. And, and, you know, we've talked informally at the executive committee that we want, what, we owe the commissioners plus maybe another twenty thousand dollars on it, you know? And, uh, and then, uh, so we can pay the actual commissioners, and we're not in debt anymore, so.
Yeah.
So there's a plan there. Okay, so, anyway, so I just wanna explain what the other fifty thousand dollars was that you guys aren't really paying for, but you did pay for through justice. So we are at a point in the, in the plan, as you guys probably can see, that we're, we're close to the end. We still have about twelve, about fifteen thousand dollars left in our budget. And so I didn't know if you guys wanted to have some sort of community meeting that was unscheduled in, in the plan to invite people out to, you know, see what we've done, you know, what's going on.
I think that'd probably be wise. I know Sabrina brought that up as well on one of the emails there. I think that'd be a good idea, seeing as how we're introducing this for the whole county. To have as many people from the county come and listen to, we'll do so, we put an ad in.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and, you know, so we were thinking, it's either be a Kansas City University Hotel, or it'd be one of the Newton, uh, New Center, Balm, Balm, kind of, kind of thing. Try to get as many people out to, to come, all the people worked on, all the agents, the supplies, data. Invite all them, probably have some, you know, ladies and gentlemen.
What do you think the attendance would be for something like that?
It would be, I don't know.
Go, that's, come look for if you're gonna have the Kent Hotel, or, or do you look out?
And I have no idea how many people would actually be there, but it's.
Ballroom, this room?
We could tell them, hey, listen, you know, you know, we're about to celebrate Portage, right? So we would like to do some sort of, you know, celebration of this, you know? I think it'd be kind of good, but this isn't, this meeting, I think, should be prior to you guys, definitely not after you.
Correct.
So we could still call it kind of like a celebration, and then, or still looking for any feedbacks, a living document, will there be posts, you know, somewhere, this is a living document. We can change it anytime, you know, the commissioners feel comfortable. And, so, um, but, so what I was thinking about doing is setting up, you know, you'll see the maps, and there's a beautiful map, so I thought we'd list some of those things, tell us what you think. We could do that interactive voting thing, you know, a section on that. And then Gail would also, by that time, you know, by that time, Gail would have the interactive county thing that I think we did for Brimfield, show that off. I think that would be really good. Think that, I think you guys are gonna like that.
I think it sounds nice. My, just my question is, has been to many of these public meetings. I have, I've only seen one that was well attended, and we didn't put it on. So that, that's, that's my only curiosity. How many people? Could you get fifty people, or a hundred people, or two hundred people, or five?
Well, I don't, I don't know. It seems like, okay, so with public hearings, this is my experience with public hearings, is that when anybody's really angry about it.
They all show up.
They all show up.
Correct.
But if they're, they're comfortable, they think everything's going well, they don't show up. So I think you guys are doing well.
So, and that, and that's where, where you said, you said Kent Hotel, you said, you know, Newcom. It's just like, you'd be able to take one of their offices, you know, study rooms, typically. So that's my curiosity, is just planning, how, how, how would you encourage people to plan and to have a big presentation of the people there? That, that's, that'd be my only question.
We'll, we'll make it happen. I'll make it.
I will hold you to that.
Yeah, Gail will make it happen.
Well.
Poor Gail.
She talks too much. Poor Gail.
Yeah.
She's got a better smile. Okay.
But Gail does a lot of the work. And so just for example, we, um, set up, and we're not doing this for this, but we sent out invites to shows, we had a show, a little meeting, and we sent an invite out to them. And I didn't, you know, it's typically, people don't come to those. And, uh, we had about, because of the Geis project and the airport issues, um, we had a hundred and fifty people.
Yes.
Hundred and fifty people. And we used that little interactive thing, that was, that was, that was great. They loved that. I mean, when we did it with the RPC board, the last count was, what did you think about this? And half the, half my board said, it made me more alert. It made me excited to be here. I was like, what are you talking about?
That's good stuff.
Yeah, so.
Very good. Anything else?
No, did you, if, if.
I'll, I'll give you this, and you're gonna give us.
We'll give you.
Copy of that.
Four or five copies, and you can display it at the front if you want.
Yep, absolutely. All right, nothing else?
Well, did we pick a date? We don't, you know?
Pick a date for?
Yeah, for the, this, this meeting. Um, for this, this meeting, you guys have, you go, I'd like to have.
You're gonna do evening meeting?
Yeah, four thirty or five o'clock.
Whose evening is that?
Whose evening is that?
At, at four thirty in the afternoon, most people are getting off work.
Yeah, I would say six.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, when we have some of these public meetings that we have that people come to, most of the people I know are still working at four thirty or five, at six o'clock.
All right, we could do, like, we could do like a.
Sometime, about six or something like that, or a little bit after, give people a chance to get home from work and.
We could do a night working starting at maybe five, five thirty even, and then have the meeting itself. Just so that people who drive early, there's something for them to do.
I, I'd say the doors open at five thirty and it starts at six.
Okay.
What are you looking at for a date?
Well, so, all right, so we, we were hoping to take this to my board by May, May 10th, and have, have the adoption hearing on May 18th.
So you wanna have it before that, then?
Yes, we do, um.
So we're looking at April?
And, and we had, and we do, and we were asking people for feedback by April 6th. So I think, you know, from our review entities and the different elected officials, we'll deal with that. So it probably should be between April 6th and maybe April 20th. So that would probably be the absolute latest, is April 20th, just to make sure it actually, their, their input actually got into the document.
Are we thinking like a Thursday night? What, what day of the week, or does it matter?
Uh, Thursday nights are, are good, just not the Thursday after of my meeting, so that, not the 13th of April. So it'd be the 20th, that would be the 20th of April. The reason why is I have, we have like four different townships that meet on that date, and usually get two of those four places on the same day, same night.
So six o'clock, open, doors open at five thirty, meeting starts at six on the 20th of April?
Yeah. And if you tell, you know, we go for the 20th of April, then we'll start advertising now.
20th of April, ladies and gentlemen? Yep. You got it, 20th of April.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Thank you. Have a great day.
I want to pass it down, please. I highlighted what I thought would be important for you.
Goodness, girl. Morning, Chris.
Uh, thank you.
You're out of order.
Good morning. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3, Board of Commissioners motions, enters an executive session to conference with attorney for the public, public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending court action.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Will you approach the.
Yes, please, sir.
Just do it quietly.
But I might, I might.
Okay, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes. No action.
No action.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good meeting you.
Before Chris Lee, Chris, I just wanted to follow up regarding the solar in the wind turbines, because remember, we got that resolution from Shaler'sville, and they're really adamant. They want us to put like a moratorium, but you can't do that. You have to go through the process. And so if you could come back next week, because it's making me nervous, because according to the thing, they could be grandfathered in if we don't have anything put in place yet. And as long, but then as long as they don't have the permit from the POS, which is the sitting board or whatever, yeah, Power Sitting Board, can you please make that priority? Because this is very...
I got a memo.
Yeah, yeah, we got this.
Sure, absolutely.
Could you please come back next week? Because we need to get on there. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Good seeing you.
Hey, welcome, guys.
Well, hello.
Laura, Chris, come on up. You get the front centers.
Hi.
Thank you, guys, for coming in. This is a good one.
Oh, gosh, Laura, how are you?
Oh, nice to meet you.
Hello.
Christine's here.
Hi, how are you? Thank you.
So let's hear about some trail projects.
There you go.
Well, as you know, the Headwaters Trail has been on our radar forever, at least 25 years. And it's been on a lot of different plans at the state, local, federal. So finally, with the abandoned rail line through Aurora and Manaway, Norfolk Southern, and now First Energy owns it, that opened the door. We were, you know, we were kind of stuck by the railroad for a long time. So now that the city of Aurora has an easement on it, and ours is ready to be signed, now we have the right of way and we're ready to move ahead with green.
Yes, excellent. I just talked to the city of Solon yesterday, for, and they're going to be, that letter, which we need tomorrow. They're asking, city of Solon, I spoke to Mayor Benjamin as well, that the rail from Solon, they're going to buy that land, and it comes into Aurora, and the only thing, we wouldn't call it the water.
Headwater.
Headwater. There, but Aurora would, they've made an agreement with themselves to separate the two, that where it starts by, I think around 306 or something like that, would be ours. They wrote, yep. And so Aurora is going, is in for that, and they'd asked us for a letter saying, hey, we support you from doing that.
And I think we already did that.
That was just yesterday.
Oh, was it just yesterday? We had those letters.
We got those, yep.
Yeah, I got it from somewhere else, too.
Yep, absolutely.
We have a couple different...
No, sounds great. Sounds great.
I'm excited.
How long, when we do this, by the railroad station in Aurora, how long continuous will the bike path be, or the walking path?
Right now, we've got eight and a half miles between Garrettsville and Manaway at Midnight Road, near Manawayville, which, and this would be a little over four miles, about four and a quarter, I think, between Aurora and Park Street, and you've not yet. So, yeah, over 12 miles.
Manaway to Garrettsville's awesome, but I got a flat tire halfway through. What do you do?
Walk on, baby.
You guys help.
He needs a little patch kit, saddle. But no, I think we all look forward to it. We think it's a great idea. Thank you both for coming in to talk about this, but when Laura told me, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Here, letters are done.
Letters are done.
Awesome. Yeah, we have already signed. You guys want them now? Or who do they go to? Yeah.
No, this is...
Yeah, go to Chris Craycar.
This is, and this was for the one for Aurora?
There's another one. There's two.
There's two.
Okay.
And the Headwaters Trail? We already signed them.
Yep, and this is, and this is going to go to the mayor of Aurora and the mayor of Solon as well.
No, this goes...
Two separate.
No.
This, this Headwater.
And that goes to Laura. These are your new letters.
This, no, there's, yeah, this is for you. This is the other one we're talking, is something that needs to be done tomorrow.
She's got them.
Yeah, she's got them.
I was gonna say, I didn't sign that one. I just asked for it yesterday.
Then we'll sign them.
Can they have, may they have?
He's okay. It's getting close to lunchtime. He's all right, really.
There you go, ladies.
So you got copies of those there?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
That'll be great. Look forward to it.
Appreciate your work. It's awesome.
Bye, Laura. Bye, Chris.
My, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
That's a, hey, Laura, do we have...
Can I leave some for you?
The maps of like...
Do you have AAA for the trail?
Different trails.
They need to redo theirs.
Yeah. I was just walking on the red and white trail the other day, and I was just like, wonderful, there's a map out here.
We should go and take a walk.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on now.
Yeah, a lot. I want to know where the big sandstones came from. Did you guys build a bridge over the top of it? I want to try to, how would somebody get those massive sandstones down there?
Can we get AAA for the trail? Hey, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'd like to go and do that. Okay, great. All right, thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Good seeing you.
Okay, miscellaneous, please.
All right. Oh, wait, did Michelle have anything?
Um, I do not.
Okay. You missed her, she's down there.
Oh, I thought she was participating in this conversation.
I had an insurance certificate for that.
Okay. All right, all right. I'll make a motion. The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the March 13th, 2023 Certificate of the County Auditor that the total annual appropriation from each fund do not exceed the amended official estimate of resources for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, as presented by the Portage County Auditor's Office.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes. Yes.
In accordance with ORC Section 325.07, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Portage County Sheriff's Transportation of Prisoners Report for February 2023, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Portage County revolving loan fund balance sheet dated February 28th, 2023, as presented by Neighborhood Development Services.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Kennel Disposition Report and Entake Report for March 6th, 2023 through March 12th, 2023, as presented by the Chief Dog Warden Dave McIntyre.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Kennel Disposition Report and Entake Report for February 20th, 2023, through March 5th, 2023, as presented by Chief Dog Warden Dave McIntyre.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Portage County Investment Reconciliation for the month of February 2023, as presented by the County Treasurer and County Auditor.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the Portage County Investment Portfolio Report for February 2023, as presented by the Portage County Treasurer.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
In accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 325.07, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the monthly record, our record of proceedings and transactions for February 2023, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Edith B. Pavlik to the Tax Incentive Review Council for the city of Streetsboro.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sabrina?
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Is there anything else to come for the board?
I would like to make a comment.
Please.
On Tuesday, elected officials and some directors were out at our Emergency Operations Center for a training session with Brian Shackelford, our EMA Director. And it was very well done. The information given, I think that the commissioners or administrator are ready to go assist them with decision-making and that type of thing in the event of a disaster within our county. And just for that, they do an awesome job out there, and Ryan's the right guy for that job.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I just got a text from Ravens Pack. They said, this is what we got to watch with the food bank. She said, the only issues we are having is we are paying more for items to the food bank than other distributors. And we have noticed a change in quantity and variety of the free items at the food bank. So, Michelle, if you would just make sure that we note that, or whatever agreement, to make sure that we're getting the right stuff. That's the only issue, but we're going, yeah, we'll take...
That whole premise of, if we can have, if I could go to the food bank and get $5,000 a month food, that, and I had a $10,000 budget, now we really have a $15,000 budget, so you still have your $10,000 to go purchase things from the local stores.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, we, if we're giving the money to the food bank, it should be free to our pantries, right?
Correct, it will be. It will be. It will be, and there'll be a ticker tape.
They will also reach out, we have over 48 partners, I'm sorry, that they will reach out to, yeah, and figure out exactly what items that they need, staple items.
Have you noticed some smaller qualities have been, and the quality of, I don't buy chips, but I buy a bag the other day, and I couldn't believe the size of it for the same price.
Messing with the sizes, paying more, but you're getting less. But, no, that was one thing. She just, I mean, literally just texted me, but...
So, yeah, that's, I think we're all thinking pretty much the same way, that if we can take a 6,000, whatever per entity off per month, they have the money that they had in the first place, to be able to go out and buy a lot of the meats and parcels that they talked about.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes. Tony?
Yes. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Yeah, she does.